Linda. I'm taking over community cleanup events with Public Works. And I've been just kind of talking to people about what I should do. And your name's come up in a couple of meetings that I've been in about being a really good resource and being really involved. And so people have said really good things about you.
Oh, well, thank you.
Just wanted you to know. Your name's been used and it's not been in vain.
I really appreciate that. Yeah, please reach out anytime. We try to do everything we can to help get things cleaned up.
And it shows.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for joining today. We're going to begin the Keep Current Beautiful Committee meeting. I would just like to let everyone know that this meeting is being recorded. So I'd like to call to order the Keep Current Beautiful Committee meeting held on February 16th, 2022 at 2:00 P. M. My name is Alicia Gutierrez and I am the committee coordinator. We have Kern County Public Works staff on the call as well as county council Stephanie Bowie. Thank you all for joining us today. So we'll go ahead and move on to item number two. Welcome in roll call. I'll be seeing which committee members are here today. If you can please let me know, that'd be great. Daniel Harrison.
I'm here.
Karen Sanders. David, I'm sorry, Linda Martin.
Present.
Andrea Medina.
I'm here.
Thank you. Gary Ananen. David Caddell.
Here, I'm here.
Thank you. Steve Kinsey. And Christopher McGee.
Present.
Thank you. Okay, a quorum has been met. Thank you all for your attendance. Moving on to item number three. And we would like to approve resolution for Keep Current Beautiful Committee to hold remote meetings. The copy of the resolution was emailed out in the meeting invite for your reference. So resolution number 2022-002. To authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the Keep Current Beautiful Committee for the period of February 12th, 2022 through March 13th, 2022 pursuant to the Ralph and Brown Act. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make a motion. This is Chris McGee.
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, who's second?
Linda, I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Okay, I'm all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, any opposed? Okay, I'm hearing none. Okay, now moving on to item number four. We have our meeting minutes from January 19th, 2022. A copy of the minutes were also submitted in the Microsoft invite for your reference and are also available online. Do we have a motion to approve the January 19th minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, David. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
And who is that, I'm sorry?
This is Karen Sanders. I didn't make it for the roll call.
Oh, no, okay, thank you, Karen.
Sure.
I'll also check off that you are present.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, hearing none, the motion carries. Nat, thank you. Okay, let's move on to item number five on the agenda. A new business. The last several meetings, those committee meetings, for those who weren't at the last meeting, we have an upcoming cleanup event scheduled in April, April 23rd. We're combining both Earth Day and Great American Cleanup Event into one and hoping to get some feedback from each of the committee members on a specific location that they had in mind, as well as some event logistics. Or if you guys had a community member in mind that would like to take lead on this, that would be helpful to know. So right now, we have the set date of Saturday, April 23rd, from 8:00 to 12:00. Any feedback the committee members might have on a location or event logistics? We do still have some time, but hopefully we can secure a specific location by our next meeting in March. So if none of the committee members have any location updates or event updates, that's fine. But we're hoping to get a secure confirmation from the group by mid-March so that we can start promoting that event. Andrea, do you have a question?
No, actually, we have a location identified for District 5. This was a recommendation from District 5. And it is, the address is 2206 Center Street, but it's the Center Street Pass under Mount Vernon Avenue over Edison Highway. It's a bridge overpass, there's a lot of graffiti and a lot of garbage. It's about a quarter mile stretch. And so that is going to be the District 5 focus for Earth Day.
That's great. Great to hear. And Andrea, just to confirm, will this be a cleanup or will it also be removal of the graffiti in the area as well? Would it be a combination of both?
I think that'd be great if we can get all that coordinated.
Okay.
I haven't had the opportunity to pretty much do anything. My entire family's been out with COVID and then I was the last one to catch it. So I'm still working from home. But I'll be back in my office on Monday and I'll have all my notes and phone numbers and everything. So I'll be reaching out to see if we can also get graffiti cleanup during the same time.
Okay, sounds great, thank you. And Linda?
Oh, I just wanted to add to it, Andrea. If you're going to do a graffiti cleanup, you can go to the Kern County Special Waste Facility or just call them and they'll save you paint. So I know that's sometimes an added cost. And if you give them enough notice on what they're doing, they've been very generous on saving paint for my graffiti cleanups up in Shafter area. And it's such a great reuse of paint that was going to be thrown away.
So the special waste facility, that's what you, okay, awesome, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Linda. And I can also share that information with the committee after the call for the paint shop at the Bakerfield Special Waste Facility.
If you are short, I did have some rollers. Someone borrowed them and haven't returned them. So maybe, you know, just reach out to Alicia and then she could notice me. But I had a bunch of rollers and some little pans. I don't know if you need things like that, but I'm happy to share them if you need them.
Thank you. So do we have any other comments from committee members on locations? I know in the past several meetings, we asked the possibility of meeting with your district staff members to find out problem areas in the community that need cleanup or graffiti removal. So if you haven't done so already, I do recommend you reaching out to those staff members. And I can provide that contact information again to the committee if they would like. But if we could just nail down a specific location by mid-March, that would be great. Does any of the committee members have any questions?
Yeah, I got a question. I'm Carl Brew with General Services. I've been attended since, I think you guys have formed this new group. I was working with someone else from Public Works before she left. But we've been doing a ton of cleanups like out off of, out like near the bluffs area that overlook like Hart Park. There's a lot of OHV vehicles that get back there and a lot of illegal dumping. We did a project there a couple of months ago now. And I think we hauled out like 12 tons of trash from that space. Obviously, there was like some larger items and even some engines, things like that, that we were able to get out. But I know the people that coordinate that, Team Action Dad, they would like to probably be involved in some larger efforts. We were trying to work with their organization for the Clean California Grant to try to get them some funding for it. But I know that they're trying to connect with a larger network and they, they reach out to me specifically about the Great American Cleanup. So I think they would be a good partner and they were able to mobilize a lot of folks with trailers. There's probably about 50 or so volunteers out in that space picking up trash and hauling things. And, you know, we use our Parks team as well to haul some stuff. And, you know, we also have a graffiti program in facilities for General Services as well that we can assist with materials, anything like that, supplies, tools. I'm trying to get acquainted with you all because I missed, like I said, a few meetings, been pulled in different directions.
Thank you, thank you for the feedback, Carl, that's helpful.
Can I add to that, Alicia? This is Chris. Carl, I've been in contact with Ryan as well over the, organizes those from Team Action Dad. So I've been trying to get him in the loop with what we do with Keep Current Beautiful as well. So could definitely help you out there. And I'm involved in the whole biking scene with them as well. So we can definitely mobilize something there.
Very cool. I'm actually, he's on the Parks and Recreation Commission, so I'm meeting with him later this evening. That's our public meeting tonight. So he'll be there, I'll give him a recap. That's why I was like, I saw this and my calendar was finally free to jump on. So I'll present this to the commission overall. But I know he's going to have an interest and want to assist. So I'll see if, is it okay if I send him these meeting invites for him to get connected that way? All right.
Of course.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, before I move forward, do we have any additional comments from the committee or the public?
Alicia, I do have Josh Bryant, one of the council members for Out and Taft. Only my would be working with Group 5 for that Great American Cleanup. But he's going to organize something out in Taft for that day as well. So we will have something out there.
Great. And so that will be, I know you're in District 5, Chris, but that'll be taken care of for District 2. Right, for the Taft community? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, okay. Okay, with no further comments, we'll move on to item number five. Be share the letter of support from Keep Current Beautiful. So last month, Keep America Beautiful reached out to all California affiliates, asking for a letter of support. They will be applying for a grant with Caltrans. And this is also part of Governor Newsom's $1.5 billion investment in Clean California. And so they submitted a proposal and then they reached out to California affiliates, asking for support. So this is just a copy to let you guys know that Keep Current Beautiful submitted a letter. And they did let us know that, you know, if they should be awarded with a grant, that those funds will be shared with the California affiliates. Okay. Does anyone have any questions about this? Okay, so.
Well, Alicia, I have a question. This is Dan Harrison.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm in District 1, which extends through Lake Isabella and Ridgecrest. Is that correct?
I believe so.
So wasn't there people on the board that represented Lake Isabella and Ridgecrest as well?
Yes, Gary Ananen, he is, represents District 1 as well. He couldn't be here today, but he has been very active in the meetings. And I actually have a comment I'm going to be sharing on his behalf later down the agenda. But yeah, so yeah, so if you need to get in contact with Gary, just to kind of organize an event, feel free to do so.
Well, I'm just, I'm actually backtracking to the last event in terms of picking a site. So would it be, it would be appropriate to deal with him and represent him from District 1 to maybe come up with a couple sites since the geographic size of District 1 is so big?
Yeah, I mean, because even like Keep Bakersfield Beautiful reached out and partnering with them for the Great American Cleanup. But because, you know, this is Keep Current Beautiful, we have five different districts we want to touch and have a presence in. And that's why we're asking for just, you know, hopefully we can get up to five separate events, one for each district. So we'll see.
But I'm saying, it would be appropriate if we could have two, it seems like it'd be appropriate if you could have a couple in District 1 because it's so large geographic. And I mean, there's no problem with that, right?
No, not at all. We're just asking a minimum of at least hopefully one event.
Sure, I understand, okay. And you said his name was Gary?
Yeah, and I can share his information with you.
Okay, great.
Via email, after the call.
Great, awesome, thank you, thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you, Dan. Okay, I'd like to move on to one more item on the agenda before we move on to item number six. So I'd like to provide an event recap for your neighborhood cleanup, which took place last month, January 22nd. We reached out to the community, asked anybody who'd like to get involved to spend 30 minutes in their community, in their neighborhood, just picking up trash and sharing that effort with us. We did get, you know, some good interest with that. In total, we had 16 volunteers. And by 16, those were the individuals that reached out, who provided information, provided photos of their cleanup. Cleanups took place in South West Bakersfield, Losco, the Lost Hills area, Shafter. Our very own Linda Martin was very involved in this cleanup effort, so thank you, Linda, for that. Volunteers picked up a total of six large trash bags and one large bag of recyclables. The Shafter's Women's Club, which Linda was a part of, picked up two large bags of trash. And the Lost Hills Cleanup Group, which was partnered with the Community Volunteer Coalition, confirming how many bags of trash they collected. But I think it's a pretty good amount, since there were about 10 volunteers with that group. And here we have some photos of the cleanup. Everyone looking happy picking up trash, so that's great. So they're able to share their cleanup efforts with us. Yep, that's it. Any questions? Okay, so that's just one example of a recent event we had. We, you know, asking people to volunteer. So that was, that was a great, great gesture in the community. Okay, so if we don't have any further questions from the committee or the public, I'd like to move on to item number six. Presentation by Karina Mendez on recent and upcoming community cleanup efforts.
Can everybody hear me? Yeah. Okay. All right, so for our rapid guys, we have now expanded to, I want to say, seven, possibly eight employees in the group now. We've still got a couple more people that need to sign up and get all the paperwork done. But we should have probably 10 here soon. So in January, we had 445 dump sites that were cleared. 93.34 tons were collected. 66 mattresses were collected. And 50 of those were recycled. Our encampment group has also expanded. We have, I want to say, five different individuals. So right now, we have one for each district that they can focus on. We had 19 encampments that were cleared. And upcoming household hazardous waste events. We have, not this weekend, but next weekend, we have two, one in Kern Valley and one at the Ridgecrest Special Waste Facility. And then we have, I want to say, six in March, March 5th. We have Mojave Special Waste and Tehachpian Ridgecrest Special Waste on the 12th and the 26th. Delano on the 19th. And the Lebec Transfer Station on the 26th as well. I don't believe last month that I was able to share all of the tonnage information for our January event in Bakersfield. So I wanted to, I received more information, so I wanted to give you guys a full count for everything. At each of the three locations, we had over 100 customers. We actually had a total of 586 for the event. 44.92 tons were collected and 27.1 tons were recycled. And that was with our partners, our partnership with Caesar Chavez Environmental Corps, the Salvation Army, Warner Brothers, Howard's Garbage, Superior Sanitation, and Price Disposal. And our January 22nd event in Taft, we were partnered with Westside Waste, Salvation Army, and Caesar Chavez again. We had 40 customers as a total and 7.5 tons were collected. And then for Lamont, we did an event on February 5th at the David Head Center. I'm still waiting on some tonnages from the hauler that we had out there. But the tires that our department collected was a total of 1.36 tons. And this weekend, we will be out in Mojave at the Mojave Junior Senior High School. And we will have our partners, the Caesar Chavez Environmental Corps, collecting e-waste and tires. And we will also have Waste Management, Inc. out there with us. And then we're planning on some March events. We're still hoping to get two out there. The only one I have confirmed that I want to share with you guys is in Delano on the 19th. It will be at the Memorial Park and that'll be a partnership with South Tiller River Rich Grove Refuge. And hopefully, we can get confirmations from our other partners, the Caesar Chavez Environmental Corps as well. That's everything for me.
Hey, Karina. As you get closer, can you, for the Delano Memorial Park, or if you guys get a flyer or something, can you push that to me? I'd like to have some folks from General Services Parks represented there as well.
Yes, of course, I will share that flyer with you. Like I said, we're waiting on confirmations from our other partners. But once we have that done, then we can share the flyers with the group and also with you as well. Great, thank you, Karina.
Do we have any comments from the committee or the public on Karina's presentation? Any questions?
I just think it's, those numbers are just astounding to me. And I, maybe I'm just naive, but I just think it's amazing.
Yeah, we've seen a lot more people wanting to participate, especially since we've been partnered with the Caesar Chavez Environmental Corps. It's been a blessing for us to have them there so that way we can get the tires properly recycled and they take care of it themselves. We don't have to deal with it, our employees don't have to deal with it at the landfills. And so it's been great to partner with them and be able to provide that type of service for the community.
I'm thrilled you're out there doing that, thank you.
Great, thank you, Karina. Okay, so I'd like to move on to item number seven. Any committee member announcements or reports you would like to make? This would be the time. Oh, yeah. Excuse me, if you're not speaking, if you could just please mute your mic, that would be helpful, thank you.
Alicia, I'd like to share about cleanup in Taft, if you don't mind.
Yes, of course.
Okay, so on January 22nd, we held a cleanup around the Ash Street Apartments out in Taft. We had about 25 people show up from the West Side Recreation Park District, Laborers of the Harvest, West Side Waste Management, the Taft Oil Technology Academy, and a couple other organizations. We were able to do a great job of cleaning up in that area. We had tires, we had TVs, we had sofas, as well as just regular general trash that was all over, whether it be glass or paper items, whatever. And when we left the area, it was in much better condition than it was going, starting out. And we also were able to talk to some of the people in the community there about kind of keeping that up for them and making sure that they're doing their part to keep their area clean, in between cleanups and so forth. And it was actually a very nice event that we were able to do quite a bit at. So like Karina was saying, there was over seven tons of trash collected that day between the bulk item pickup and the cleanup that we are posting as well. So just want to give a brief update there.
Thank you, Chris. You guys definitely made an impact that weekend. And Linda?
Hey, Chris, thank you for sharing. I was hoping that you would share about that cleanup. I was just wondering if you could share with the group any helpful advice on getting the volunteers? Any things that you would have changed for next time? Just so that we can all kind of help each other out on our cleanups coming up?
One thing I've noticed, I mean, getting the volunteers going, whether it's church organizations or service clubs, to the schools themselves are great places to get volunteers. One piece of advice that, from having cleanups in the past compared to this one, is closer to the end of the quarter, the students have to have community service hours. So this being the beginning of the quarter, we didn't get, I think we had two kids from the Oil Technology Academy, where the last one I held out there, we had 40 kids out there. So as you get closer to those end of the quarter and they have to have their hours, they tend to show up a little bit better. But, I mean, obviously, the service clubs and the organizations, whether it be religious or whatever, are good places to start for getting volunteers.
How did you guys address like having the different vests and safety gear distributed? Did you all meet in one spot and then just bring all the items back to the bulk item event? Or how did you work through that with the locations?
Our area was fairly small. We actually did have a couple of people that split off and did another area. But it was, the litter in the area was pretty concentrated. So we all met at a vacant lot that was there and had a couple of rollaways there. And then just spread out from there and brought everything back to that lot. As far as the other people that split off, they took their bags with them. And West Side Waste Management actually had their trucks driving around. You could toss your bags into the back of their trucks while the cleanup was going on. So it made it a lot easier instead of having to go back and pick them up.
Great, thanks, Chris. Any other announcements from the committee? If hearing none, I will move on. I have a couple of comments to make. I have a couple of comments to make. Gary Ananian represents District 3. He wasn't able to make it to this meeting today. He actually was up in Kernville at a meeting for Whiskey Flat Days happening this weekend. And he wanted me to share with the group that he has a cleanup planned at Hart Park on March 13th. And anyone who's interested in attending can reach out to him directly, and they'll be meeting at 9:00 a.m. in front of the ranger station at the park. His email address, if anyone wants to write it down, is G A R Y at kernriverconservancy.org. So once again, it's a cleanup at Hart Park on March 13th at 9:00 a.m. Okay, I'm on to another announcement.
Was that, are we sure? That was get@kernriverconservancy.com dot org? What was it?
Dot org.
Dot org. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so just two other items. So this past month and just recently, we received two letters of resignation. One from David Duckett, who represents SD3, his primary member. And we have on the call today David Caddell, who also represents SD3 as the alternate member. So while the vacancy is being filled for that position, David Caddell will have voting, be representing the vote in the committee. Our second person, Lynn Black. She also submitted her letter of resignation just this past week. She represents Supervisor District 2. She is an alternate member. And on the call, we do have Karen Sanders, who is a primary member and represents SD2. So I just wanted to let the committee know that we do have two vacancies that are open right now, and we're working with county council and getting those positions filled. And once that happens, we'll, you know, add them to the committee, welcome them, and let the committee members know. Do we have any questions? Any questions from staff, committee members? You got Chris?
Who, which districts are the supervisors in those districts?
So SD2 is Shubner, and SD3 is Supervisor Madder.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, and if no further comments or questions from the committee? Oh, Chris, did you have another question? Nope. Okay. So I'd like to move on to item number 10. Just, our next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, March 16th at 2:00. It will also be held virtual via Microsoft Teams. So I'd like to now adjourn the meeting at 2:34 p.m. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I shall move.
I make the motion.
Thank you.
My second.
Okay, so we will adjourn today's committee meeting at 2:34 p.m. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.